Everybody know that's happened?
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started then. So it's 1:31 on September 25th, and we call the word this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, the Planning Department, and the Planning Commission as a workshop in review of file AM 0007-24, our comprehensive plan land use component and comprehensive plan map. And I know we have GIS online to assist us with driving the map. And so we can hopefully do this in a well-ordered manner because we have professionals helping us. As far as the Board's perspective, I know at the conclusion of the last workshop, we talked about moving into the map at this workshop. And there was the suggestion that maybe we want to start in a particular sub-area on the map and then kind of work our way through the county. So do you guys have a particular interest? I was thinking maybe we could just start in the southwest Bonner County, that lower left portion of the map, and then work our way up and around, moving through the different sub-areas in the county as a whole. So did you guys have a different approach you wanted to take?
That's great.
No comment?
Sure. We can do that. I don't have, I don't have any particular order to go in. So I guess if we start in the Segal area, we'll just have to make sure that we come back to capture the lower portion. Yeah, because obviously we have enough areas outside of the sub-areas that we still have to address all of the maps. So we'll just have to figure out geographically how we're checking off spaces as we go through it. And do you, I don't, quick reference to the boundaries of the Segal sub-area. Let's see, is that in the public map?
One of the maps that GIS has that has those boundaries on it.
Yeah.
And it actually may be called Gold Mountain.
Well, that's our, that's our designation.
Okay.
Oh, you created your own? Sub-areas? So you created areas that were greater than the sub-area boundaries so that you could subdivide the entire county?
And that's what the Land Use Analysis Tool has. It's all broken down in there.
Based on that, okay.
It's somewhat representative of the sub-area work of someone.
Gotcha. So then, might be valuable. We tried to work within those areas so that we can be sure that we capture the full county by walking our way systematically through areas. So, so that was in the analysis map?
Yeah, the Land Use Analysis Tool.
Yeah, I was just gonna see. Hey, if GIS could pull up the Land Use Analysis Tool map so we could see, it was seven areas that you guys created?
I think, I think GIS has, can pull up one that will show those different areas. Not going to the Land Use Analysis, I think that GIS could pull that up.
Yeah, wherever they have the layer, it's fine.
All right, can you guys hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, just one minute here, I'm looking for those, I see the sub-areas, I'm just looking for the ones they created, one second here.
Yeah, we put you on the spot, no worries, thank you. Yeah, for clarity, for the record, are we working with Chad in planning? I'm sorry, GIS, not planning, thank you. Give him a moment to see if he comes back. Yeah, I don't, doesn't look like that tool is online at the moment. Oh wait, maybe there it is, let's see, oh, there it is. Well, the GIS page lands you back to the planning update, or the comp plan update page, but then I found the link. Or maybe not. Not getting it.
Sorry, one minute here, I am having the Director, Michael Bowling, help me find this data set. I have the sub-areas, I just don't have the new ones.
Okay, understood, we didn't, didn't ask you in advance for that specific data set, so I know you're working on the fly. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not finding, I'm probably just missing it, I'm not finding that tool on the website at the moment. Um, no. Yeah, because it's the Land Use Analysis Application, which is on the comprehensive plan current update page as a link. When you select that link, get the disclaimer pop-up splash screen.
Okay, I think I found it, I'm just gonna need to add it to the map.
Okay.
And then I will share my screen.
You end up on the GIS Land Use Analysis page, but not in the tool.
Just going to GIS page.
Takes it to the page, but not to the tool. It used to go to the tool.
Oh, I?
Because I've used that link before, but, okay. I'll have to look at that, maybe the link's broken. Hey Alex, just a side note, we should check with GIS to figure out if we have an active link to the Land Use Analysis Tool. So when I use both the link on the GIS website or the comp plan update page, I don't get the tool, I don't get a tool that opens. Okay, so, I see, okay, so Gold Mountain is the Segal sub-area plus any additional. So then the area south of the Segal sub-area and east of the southwest Bonner County sub-area is its own area you guys have identified as Blacktail Mountain. Does that make sense? Because it wasn't captured by the other.
The gold mountain designated area there is very close to the Segal.
Yeah.
Sub-area. Specifically for that, because south of that was not designated as a sub-area. So what's shown is Blacktail obviously goes over to the east boundary of the county, or port toward it, up where there's nobody living. And then southwest county, Spirit Valley.
Yeah, that makes sense, just like you created the Lunge Peak area because that was not captured in the sub-area. So that has its own designation now as an area.
You probably recognized the hoodoo designation here as being west county.
That was the boundary for the sub-area.
And then Priest Lake is about the same, so.
Okay. Very close to, yeah. Yep, that's helpful, thank you. So then, if we start, if we start in the Gold Mountain area, then that's basically the, close to the center of the map, if you would, and then we can just circle out from there, yeah. Okay, so Chad, are you the one assisting us today?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you. If we could please then zoom in on the center of the map, in the Gold Mountain area. And do you guys want to start by just walking up the middle through the 95 corridor? And then after we get through that, we can go to the east and west sides of the 95 corridor?
I kind of would like the Planning Commission to direct it because they know what they did, and you guys might have a better way to walk us through the map versus just picking a point.
This is Dave Frankenbach, for the record. So this'll, this'll end up sounding familiar. I think the most fundamental underlying principle as we were laying out land use designations was to look at the proximity to transportation corridors. And obviously, the prominent feature in Segal is 95, which is probably the most major transportation corridor in the county. If I go back to the sub-area, we didn't talk about it in those terms so much, but the sub-area did talk about having a quarter-mile either side of 95 as being, I think they called it Segal light industrial. And we did, we were aware of the plans for 95. We looked at the, at the current plans at that time that ITD had put forward. And so we also talked about frontage roads, recognizing the potential that somewhere down the road there could be frontage roads along 95. So that quarter-mile reference was a quarter-mile from 95 or it's frontage roads, either side, east and west.
Can I go, do we have a pointer, a laser pointer? Because I think that for people online, might be easier.
I don't know if they work on these screens. Usually not, these are usually non-reflective screens, so I don't think you'll see them.
It does.
Yeah, that's been my general experience.
So you would have to ask the person on the computer because you're just saying.
The interesting thing, and all the sub-area groups, when they got to the mapping, dealt with this, like Dave said, the quarter-mile principle that the Segal group did. If you just take a pure quarter-mile, then with that line that would denote the quarter-mile, you split properties. So all of these maps, they're all relative to section lines and/or property lines. So that's the oddity of it in that sense.
So is that why there really isn't anything in the middle there where 95 is? I don't see any mixed-use designation there.
Yeah, there's a lot of mixed-use, mixed-use is gray.
Right, and below those couple of squares or triangles there to the north, all I see is the yellow line, which represents the highway, I'm assuming.
Yeah, the.
Down south of that, yeah.
So.
We need three mics.
Right, if we go a little further south, it disappears.
So, yeah, the thing is, here we go. So what also enters in the picture is landform or features that are there. As you're well aware, on the east side of 95 through the Segal area is, is the railroad. On the west side is El Goma Lake and so forth, wetlands. And that, that, our look at it was, we don't need to designate those areas for that use because they never will occur. So there's, that's where the gaps are for the most part. It's not till there, just off the center of the, of the screen now, where, where the railroad goes under the highway or vice versa. So then the areas between are designated. Let's see, what else, anything else?
This is, and this, I have a, I have a gap in my, people know I was on the Segal Subarea Committee, but I wasn't there the whole time. Because I was there for all the discussions about the text of the document, but I left and moved to planning and zoning before we got to talking about the map. In my opinion, the map doesn't match the text. If I was there, I would have been poking at people. You either need to change the text or make the map match the text, but it doesn't. I think early on, there was some discussion of limiting that quarter-mile. Well, first, let me, let me say one other thing. We also talked about a quarter-mile, another quarter-mile, so now we're talking about up to a half-mile either side of 95 that was designated Segal mixed-use, which was also light industrial, commercial, and residential. And the residential could be multifamily up to duplexes. And, and there was some discussion about that area, that quarter-mile and half-mile corridor being between the two intersections with Gun Club Road. So not the full length of 95, but that doesn't appear in the document. I'm not sure why, I thought that's what we were talking about. So that could be a partial explanation for the question that you asked Brian about why it's not uniform up and down the entire length of the 95 corridor. I also, Matt, refresh my memory, what's this, what was the southern boundary of Segal? Was it always now a Dufer, okay. And then if you could zoom out, just to maybe one other principle that's we're talking about, again, relative to the transportation corridors, and this is now in the planning and zoning, I'm sorry, in the Planning Commission discussions, the further we got away, either east or west from 95, the lower density we designated. So you'll see that the, that the, our five areas, which are the blue areas on the map, are closer to 95 than AF-10, which are the light green, and AF-20, which are the darker green. Yellow is suburban, most of that is, I think, suburban today. Both the area up around the south end of the Long Bridge and the area down around Coca-Lala Lake. The pink rec area around Garfield Bay and Bottle Bay, those are recreation today. There's a few areas in Segal that are remote ag forest because they're government land. Some national forest land, some BLM land around Gamblin Lake.
The dark green?
Yeah, you're right, that is, the dark green is, is remote forest. The light green is both AF-10 and AF-20.
Most of which is US Forest, there's a little bit of BLM in there.
Spotted here and there, but that's just government land.
Right.
Is that why there's that green spot there, Garfield Bay between the two rec areas?
Yes.
That's the campground.
Yes.
Forest land.
Well, on that side of the lake, it's just forest land. That one is the county campground.
That's the campground, that was forest area.
Right, the one north, at the north end of Garfield Bay is the county campground. Any other notable features I forgot to mention about the Segal area?
Well, just, you know, in general, so the blue is rural residential.
Yeah.
The light green is ag forest, which can be either 10s or 20s, depending on what the zoning is, but that's the designation.
And as a matter of principle, the reason that there's, there's a lot of ag forest is because we eliminated, or we proposed to eliminate, the rural 10. Because we didn't really see that much difference between ag 10, rural 10. We thought it was, made more sense to make it all ag forest. So that's why you see, I think, in this area and many of the others' areas, Selly Valley, for instance, the predominant feature is all ag forest. So those are the major changes.
When you zoom in a little bit into that light green patch, is that part of the area that you're talking about? No?
Where?
There's a large green area, light green area.
I'm looking at the side-by-side of the current versus what the proposed is. So like, yeah, so like that pink spot up there, I had a question on, but we're not on that yet.
That's the airpark, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's a place called Timber Airpark. It's, there's a landing strip there, and, and people have hangers right on the airstrip and I guess homes right on the airstrip. I've never been there, but, so it's recreational.
And then that blue spot?
Yeah, the blue spot down below, that was a, that was a zone change. If I'm not mistaken, that may even be part of Garfield Bay Sewer.
Right side, yes.
I don't remember who it is, I don't know. You probably can't be able to click on that to find out for sure, but if I'm not mistaken, that was a recent, when I say recent, within last few years, zone change.
Is the Garfield Sewer the below right blue side in that?
Yeah, the right side of the road, the east side.
No, I mean, when you.
But it's a split zone, I think, the way it's shown. Because they own, it's all, yeah, I think we should look at that one a little closer.
Because when you pull it, zoom out a little bit, there's another little blue spot. So my question was, what's the reason for the, the blue in that patch?
So anything, we looked at it from that standpoint since we were recommended going away from the R-10 and putting it in AF-10. Anything that was that, that's where the color came from, like Alan said. Anything that was already five-acre zoning would then get the blue color, the R-5, or residential. So this was the zone change on this, I don't know if you can bring up the date?
2021.
Yeah, it was.
2021, that zone change. Interesting, I didn't realize it went on the east side of the road. Because the sewer district, sewer district owns that piece on the right side of the cutoff.
And they own like four parcels there.
Yeah.
It looks like their pond and other thing spans multiple parcels.
Well, you're right, and that's, they bought that for a land application of the affluent.
So if we zoom out a little bit, please? So if we look a little bit, you can, you don't have to go that far, Chad, you can go back. I just wanted to get out a couple thousand feet from where we were. I know this is hard, I, could you zoom in on this a little bit more, please? Yeah, that's great, thank you. So if we go just a little bit west, we've got a series of smaller parcels that, just, just west of where it says Gold Mountain. Well, now that moved. This is fun.
Right here.
Yeah. All right, so that's, under current zoning, that's all rural 10. And then we have those three parcels you're talking about that are re-zoned to rural 5 some years back. I'm struggling with the philosophy of creating these islands that we say we don't want to create in the comp plan language like, because something had a zone change in the past. And to me, if we're taking that broad brush stroke approach of saying, what does the general context of the area, the land tell us? The highest and best use is based on the language of the comp plans proposed, then I don't know why we'd make those exceptions to that approach. Because I feel like we're now, now we're in conflict with what we say the intent of the language is less even in the comp plan. So I, you know, I don't think we're doing anyone harm if we say that we really think that area is supposed to be ag forest designation because, you know, it's, they can have a legal non-conformance. So if, if the designation changes, right, and then if the zone changes. So I'm just trying to, I want to walk through and understand the rationale about why we would create these islands.
It'll be full.
Can I ask, because when I'm pointing that out, I had a, that was my concern, is it, it is, it looks like an odd spot within that green map. But I think, when you answer, if you could address kind of the implications of the person who got that zone change and what that impact is, if it's just that it could just be odd lot, but that, when that changed, that it would mirror what that area is? That, that was one of my concern, you addressed the pink strip that goes down in the middle. And then I would extend kind of the same question to the right side, that's blue, as to just saying why that part's blue and not all green, which I'm sure there's an answer to, but I, that was, those two are what I was asking a question on.
Well, in general, I think what we were trying to do was, was where the zoning was a rural 10. We, we didn't change, we didn't, we're not proposing to change the zoning for a minimum 10-acre lot. So the reason why you see those smaller lots, they're zoned rural 10, so if they're zoned ag 10, that would be no change because there's still minimum 10 acres, which is the predominant feature, right? So when you get to the blue, the little blue dot there, the little blue, I guess rectangle. The other concern we had was when you had a relatively recent zone change, we, I think our theory was that we should, we should use a land use designation which indicates where the zoning should go. And since that was a recent zone change, we didn't think that that was proper to then put a land use designation which would, in which would involve a different zone. So we, we left it. Now, we, we struggled with that as well. But, you know, to me, if you're, if you're going to designate that as ag forest, that would mean that somewhere down the line, you're anticipating changing the zone again when it was just recently changed. And you can't change the zone within, you know, a seven-year period. So we just didn't think from a planning standpoint that made much sense. So that's, that's the reason, you know, obviously, you know, there's differences of opinion about that, but that's, that's what we, that's what we tried to do. And I think probably the other blue area over there, closer to the lake, probably pretty much the same.
And then is that, when you take, when you go out a little bit and you see the darker green versus the lighter green, is that the same kind of concept as to why, even when you go closer to where the edge is, there's a little speckle of dark green? Even when you go closer to where the, uh, the edge is, there's a little speckle of dark green?
Well, the dark green, it just means it's, it's government owned.
Yes, federal or state, so that-
You'll see a lot of anomalies.
Island effect, I understand, is outside of, of the control of the decision-making with the land use designation on the map.
Exactly. So it's government owned. That's why you see the middle of the pink area there. You'll see another little strip of green. Well, it's because it's government.
So the green and white don't have, I'm looking at a different map, so, I'm, cause I wanted to look at the comparison between the two. The, the white doesn't mean anything then either on your?
Well, the white, I think on the, on the, on the old map was also government land. We just changed it to green.
Okay.
Because it just seemed like odd. It would just have a, a big blank there. So we changed it to green.
Okay. So I kind of have the position that if this is all supposed to be that light green and the reason, the only reason these blues are not light green are because of a zone change that happened recently, it wouldn't, you wouldn't, the zone wouldn't be changed for that particular property. It would be a non-conforming. But is there a reason not to make the map look uniformed as to what that area has been designated for? So that there's consistency?
The theory was, it, it, to me, if you designate those recently rezoned areas that are rural 5, ag forest. That means that you, you, you're contemplating down the road from a planning perspective, changing the zone to, to the, to the minimum 10 acre zone. But we didn't think that that was necessarily something we should be deciding at this point. You know, it didn't make any sense. But, you know, you could be, you could make it that way. I don't know. The, the blue that's closer to the lake there, um, I don't know about that. I'm not sure what that is. I'm sure it's, it's probably, it's probably five acre zone right now. I'm sure it is.
It is, yeah.
I had a question regarding that. I'm curious why you didn't just follow the shoreline through, um, with a certain area, um, with R5 or either recreation. Cause looking at the area, there's a lot of small lots there already, and they're all now going to be sitting in a ag designation.
Well, we, we, um, we did address that. And, uh, where there's, you know, there's a lot of small lots, not, not only around Lake Ponderay, but Priest Lake too. And so we thought, since we had a lot of small lots and we're talking about really small lots, like a quarter of an acre, that were zoned rural 5. And, or that were designated rural, as rural residential. So we proposed to change that to a recreation designation, which made more sense to us. But we had a tremendous hue and cry against that. So, okay, so we just reversed it.
Even though it's pretty much, I mean, that's what it is right now.
That's what it is. So, you know, there's a, you can, you can have a philosophy of trying to redesignate areas as to what they actually are. Or just recognize a general proposition that maybe they should be designated something else. You know, I, I was a proponent of trying to reflect more of what the actual use was, or the actual size of the lots was. But that didn't, that wasn't the prevailing view. So we changed it back. I mean, that was a result, we had nine workshops, so.
Yeah.
You know, we got a lot of feedback. I mean, I, I think you guys probably copied on all, most of that stuff. We had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails.
Priest River area was very resistant to the idea of the recreation.
But it wasn't just Priest Lake. It wasn't just Priest River.
How do you like, how do you like?
Yeah, we got Segal, we got, if you, if you go, if you pull out on, on that map, you'll see a bunch of suburban areas that were, that were, um, okay, right up there, you see those suburban areas. Well, we had designated those as recreation 2, which actually provides for a larger minimum lot than, than, than suburban. Suburban go down to 10,000. Recreation go down to 12, depending on services. Well, we had a hue and cry about that too. So we said, okay, we'll just, we'll just keep it suburban. We were trying to reflect, the comp plan is supposed to be a reflection of the, of the community as a whole, not just individuals, but as community as a whole. And where we got large amounts of, of feedback, you know, we, we weren't, we weren't going to fight that. So we just, we changed it back. That's why they're suburban, not recreation.
Plus, one of the aspects of that whole exercise, looking at the shorelines, existing uses, small lots, gaps between the larger lots. And then so we said, let's make the whole thing contiguous recreation, which is very likely what it will be from now on. But that went down in flames because the existing people said no, and even some of those with the larger, larger properties said, no, that's not a good idea. So therefore, yeah, like Alan said, we got rid of that idea.
Matt Lynn Scott, yeah. So I understand the, the thought about having consistency such as, you know, that blue going to ag. But if we're gonna go ahead and use that argument for consistency, we need to look, re, re, review and relook back at Priest Lake. Cause we have strips that are currently rec. Then we have eight lots, exact same size, that zone, I don't know what the area's on. Some of them are rural 5, some, some are ag. Um, and then right, and they're sandwiched between. And then that, then you have another whole row of rec. And so if we're gonna go ahead and, and, and look at and use that argument of consistency, we, that's fine. But we probably need to go ahead and use that same argument on both sides of the coin.
And I agree. It's not an easy conversation. I know you guys, that's cause I read a lot of those emails. I know you did get a lot of public feedback on that. And there was a lot of strong opinion, a lot of misunderstanding, misinterpretation of, you know, how to apply the information, um, all across the board. And I think we, we need to be aware of that feedback and take that into account. But I, I am definitely a proponent of as much consistency as we, as we can. Again, I think a lot of thoughts that I appreciate went into the language that's currently proposed for the comp plan. Land use designation, as well as the language that's already been adopted into the implementation policies. It's pretty specific about our intent to not create these islands. And so the idea that we would adopt islands without a, in my opinion, an extremely compelling reason. Just feels like we're creating a contradiction between what we're saying in the lan, in the words and what we're showing on the map. If we go, and, and again, I, I completely acknowledge this is not a simple and easy decision as we go through and look at each area. But if we, if we stay with the area we were just focusing on, um, we, we have the challenge in my mind, if you look at the three lots that are directly south of those three that are right now shown as being rural residential designation. They're the, they're the inverse. Same size, same layout, just do a mirror image, you know, with an east-west line. And those three lots right below, below that blue rectangle, they're almost identical in size and shape. But we're, you know, on the same access road, you know, all the other, you know, factors within the land are going to be similar same. And yet, we'd be designating them differently. So that's the thing I, I appreciate the, the challenge of the situation with you guys trying to figure out the best way to do that. But I am struggling to say that I think we should do it that way. And if I'm missing something, I would really like it to be pointed out, as far as I don't think we would be doing harm to an existing landowner. Because if they, if ultimately we adopted that level of consistency across the map, they would be a legally existing non-conformance within the designation. And therefore, we wouldn't be taking away how they could use that property.
Well, the logic of what you're saying though, really is that you would expand the blue area because the lots, as you say, are the same size to the south. And, and if you did that, that would be, you know, that would be logical because they're the same size. Maybe they should be designated the same way, even though they're zoned differently. But the other principle, the other principle we, we, we looked at was, you know, there's a huge emphasis in this county on being rural and trying to maintain a rural character. And ag forest designation does that better than anything. Okay? So we tried as much as we can not to change, uh, something that was already a 10 acre minimum, even though the lots may be a half acre. We didn't, we said, oh, okay, well, you know, we're gonna make this ag forest because that's what is currently zoned in terms of a rural 10 or an ag 10. But the logic of that, you know, if, if you're trying to reflect what actually is there, doesn't make any sense.
And that's where, with the intent of creating large areas from a planning perspective and not creating the small islands. That's why I would say, right, we either have to expand the blue block or make it all the light green. And in my mind, from a planning concept, it makes more sense to say it's all light green than to keep creating different sized islands, you know, in the middle of that field. Of whatever it is, just like if we were trying to do a block of light green, you know, to the left in the middle of the blue rural residential, like, why would that make sense? So that's the piece that I'm still struggling with. I, I feel like based on the language that we've said is driving this map. And then the fact that these are really small areas of just a few parcels, it seems to me that the, the larger context is what should kind of win the argument.
And I see, Mr. Bowman, you have your hand up?
I can see the argument of planning that we're not going to fix everything. There's going to be some odd issues on the map itself. But I see the argument that if we were to do that there, then what would we do on the Priest River and the other areas where we not change those? And I think that if the application across the whole map, if that's the position, I see the disruption of basically the whole map. If we were to do that for that spot. And maybe the argument of, it has a zone and the area around it is very clear of what the intent is. And that might be kind of that barrier to creating more of those little blue speckles in the green area versus making that. Cause I don't like the blue in the middle, but I can see the argument that, uh, Lynn Scott made about if that's the logic to change that. How do you justify not changing the others that are like that in that way? And I, I see a significant disruption and I have to agree with Alan on the community's input does matter on the map. And there was an overwhelming input on a lot of people in terms of how recreation was going to go on that map. And that decision to change that, I can see the argument that was made of, then you would change necessarily the other sections that way. So I could see saying, it's not perfect, um, but it's not the worst thing in the world, kind of a position on it.
Let's go to the online comments first, please. So, Mr. Bowman?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dave Bowman, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So, I, I sat through a lot of these meetings with the planning commission where this was being discussed. And, uh, it went to great depths of discussion. But I think one of the most important things is, just, I'm looking at the blue square in the middle of all the green, uh, to east in the Segal Peninsula, that one. There's no harm in having a non-conforming lot or parcel. They serve a purpose. It's just, and, and really, if you guys approve this the way that it is, you're not creating an island. Someone else created this island before you, probably through bad policy, most likely. And, and so it's just done. And, and there are non-conforming parcels all over this county. And they serve a purpose. And that purpose is to say, this, this was allowed in the past, but we're not going to do any more of it. And, and it's, there's, there's absolutely no downside to a non-conforming parcel. And if you start going, you know, I could see here that if you were going, I understand the desire to make it homogenous, but it's never going to be. And it's not the fault of anyone in this room right now. It's, it's just how things have gone down, but there's no reason to continue to perpetuate it. So if you, if you really want to make it homogenous, I think in this case, you would want to make it ag forest. But as Mr. Lynn Scott said, if you start doing that here, now you gotta start looking at it everywhere. And I think you're opening up this huge can of worms. And just because somebody lives in a home that's on the lake, doesn't make it, it's not recreational. It's residential in most cases. Recreation, the intent of that is, you know, Schweitzer is recreational and, and, and Garfield Bay and Camp Bay, those are recreational areas. Just because a house is on the water doesn't make it, it, it's not, I don't think it's the intent of that land use. So I would really encourage you to, to leave these areas the way that they came in from the planning commission as legal and non-conforming. And just let it go because I, I think you're, you're just gonna drive yourself in a rubber room. And I think you'll end up with negative results. And remember, there's no downside. And I've had this discussion with certain people that are in the room right now. If you can show me a, if you can show me a downside of legal non-conforming, you can change my mind. But you can't show me a downside. And honestly, there just isn't one. So I would really urge you to keep that in mind. Uh, thanks.
A land use designation doesn't make it non-conforming. Only a zone change does.
But we're, yeah, but to your earlier point, we're gonna drive to that intent with the, with the designation app.
I don't think there's a, necessarily a right answer either way on this one, which is why we debated it for so long. So I'll say that to start with. But I just wanted to point out, relative to that blue, blue rectangle there, you know, you can solve the, the, the problem at the land use designation by coloring that light green, but you still have a blue bubble there when you look at the zoning. Because it is going to be R5 and you're not going to change that. Similarly, I think for those, you'll see there's a couple lots up there, um, east of Gamblin Lake, on the lake, same thing. I think that was a fairly recent zone change, um, within my time, I think, on planning and zoning, actually. I remember those, same thing. So that's why those are in blue as well. So I just wanted to point out, you can solve it at this layer, but when you go to the zoning layer, you're still gonna have those non-homogenous lots in places because of past history.
He's leaning away from you too.
Yeah, this is Don. The flip side is, we've all seen it in the past. Uh, applicants come in and they talk with planning about it and well, what's this, we go back to the comp plan. Well, the comp plan is whatever. And then, so that's part of the argument for making the zone change. If these went to, in that case, and then what's shown on the, right there at, uh, that's Glengarry Bay in that blue part. If that was all light green, there'd be no support to do a zone change application coming from the comp plan. For the adjacent parcels to go to five acre. So that'd be, and we discussed that too, so.
I think that's a key point.
It is. Uh, and, and granted, you know, every one of these seemingly island of blue in the, in the green, it's involved with that argument, so.
And that's, that is, that's exactly the argument that I always see. And it's understandable. I mean, if, depending on which side you're trying to argue, that's gonna be the logic I would argue with. If I was trying to convince someone that they should allow me to make a change, is I'm gonna say, what, but look, you already have something adjacent.
Exactly.
Why, why won't you apply the same logic to mine?
And that's, the zone change applications that were not consistent with the comp plan, we've seen many comp plan amendments to the map to support the zone change. So if they went back to, or they went to, uh, the light green, the, the ag forest, um, designation, then that, that support would not be there.
Yeah, I think, uh, this is Alan, again, um, I mean, you can, like Dave said, I, this is not a hill to die on. I mean, if you want to change it to ag forest, change it to ag forest, it's not a big deal. The zone change is not going to change. And the argument that Don just mentioned is still gonna be there because whether it's, you know, a comp plan has a designation of ag forest, it's still zoned rural 5. So, so the parcel next to it wants to go to, he's still got the same argument. Well, these parcels are zoned R5, so.
On the zoning side, yeah, just not from the comp plan side. And that's-
Assistant with the comp plan.
To me, that's, I know we have this uncomfortable- And that's, to me, that's, I know we have this uncomfortable dichotomy of the history of the difference between the con plan and zoning, and changes that have occurred, but if we're just true to the intent of what a con plan is, it seems like we would say, broad brush, should all be consistent throughout these areas, and then there are going to be some anomalies that we, we can't avoid because they aren't baked in to the history. But it seems like we're being more true to the intent of the con plan, in my mind, if we're more consistent, and trying to avoid the islands when and where we can. And I completely agree with the comments that were made when it comes to, we need to be sensitive to community input. But I think we have, the way I'm seeing it is, we have two aspects of the community input, one that was very specific to certain locations, such as around Priest Lake and other bay areas and things. And then we have the general rural character feedback comment. And so I think we're, it is a challenge as we go and look at other areas, but I think if we're trying to honor both of those community feedback items, then we try to create the broad brush, consistent color whenever and wherever we reasonably can, and then in some of these areas where we had more specific community feedback, then we take that into account as well, which is, I think, what you guys did. I think that these other individual, two, three, five parcel at a time anomalies are, are just that, it's like they're kind of anomalies to the broader, larger conversation of feedback that we've received. So I think we can address them separately, is my opinion right now, that we could make these light green, create more consistency from a con plan intent perspective, and then figure out these other areas that were struggled because of all of the volume of feedback that you received on some of those other areas. John Applet?
Yes, I just wanted to say, the land use designation, true, it's not zoning, but Idaho Code requires consistency between the comprehensive plan, land use designations, and zoning. So to say that it does not affect the zoning is misleading, because once designation is changed, the zoning is expected to follow. So even though you look at changing something, the zoning is to follow and is expected to change when the land use changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Linscott here. You know, going back to that whole Priest Lake and the whole rec designations and everything, that conversation, a lot of the arguments were that we don't want to see any marinas up there. So we actually changed the name instead of Recreational Resort Community, we're just calling it Recreational Community. So we're, we're taking that word resort out of it. Of course, you have to go ahead and use the, the use tables and the standards to see what is allowable. It's kind of interesting, because when you go ahead and look at those, how some of them are rural residential right now, there's like 27 different uses that people are probably not aware of that you can conditionally permit, and those are gun clubs. The list is very extensive. So when someone's worried about, you know, a marina, let's say, everybody, again, needs to, you look at those use tables and standards, and so when it comes time for zoning, a lot of those have to be reviewed very carefully.
And she has something I wanted to say.
I was going to suggest that there are probably bigger issues in this area than, than these two blue areas.
I know, but these are some fundamental things that we really have to struggle through.
You know, like I said, I think, you know, it's not a, it's, there's not a black and white answer here. I mean, if you want to change it to ag forest, change it to ag forest. I, it doesn't mean that, I think I disagree with the last comment, I don't think it necessarily means that there's a zone change, but, you know, that's a different process.
And I think, I think we may have inadvertently stumbled on a split zone, because if we go... Chad, could you pan to the west, please? Back to the blue rectangle we were looking at earlier? Is that, in fact, on the east side of the road, is that a separate parcel from the larger?
Yes. Zoned by the sewer district.
GIS is telling me it's one parcel.
On the left, the left is two parcels, but you don't see that until you open the subdivision layer. On the right is a separate parcel, separate ownership.
We tried to identify split zone properties as much as we could, and we had a, we had a, you know, at least a theory as to how we would handle those, and we tried to correct any split zone properties that we could.
It's just the one on the right, the east side, that when I look on the GIS and I select it, and it tells me the owner is Garfield Bay Water and Sewer, it's outlining the trapezoidal blue shape and the green square, all as a single parcel. And that's why I'm a little confused.
Well.
It does appear to be split zoned.
So that is a single parcel? The green, the green square on the right side and the trapezoidal blue?
Correct.
That's what the GIS is showing me for the boundary?
I wasn't aware that the trapezoid on the east side of the cutoff went through, it wasn't the same zone change. Somewhere in the documentation, it shows what the zone change was, file number. Chad, do you have that, or?
Because the left side, the west side of the road, that was the zone change, but I, I don't recall that the east side got as well.
It's an outlier to me, because it looks like, it may not be accurate, it looks, from the mapping layers, it looks like the zone change created a split zone.
It may have been.
I'm still kind of on this one. I had a question about the blue, but for me, it's, it is what it is, their surrounding has identified it, and I just feel like we should just move past that and leave it as is.
I'm sure there's probably a hundred of these on this map, right?
Yes.
You don't think so?
There are. There's a number of them.
Well, even on Sagel, there were a number, right on the, along the shoreline, along the shoreline, there's, there's quite a few blue dots, so. There's the rationale, we can explain that, why it ended up that way, but they're still there, so.
I'm okay with leaving it the way it is.
I'm the dissenting opinion. I feel like we're contradicting what we're saying in the description of land use component. But for now, I think we should move on to other areas.
One suggestion I might make is just that, and the reason is, you might get an appreciation for where else you might need to address this issue from the other perspective, as Matt was suggesting, if you're going to try to be consistent in terms of how you apply the logic. Once you go around through the whole county, you may get a better sense of what the impact would be of adopting a slightly different philosophy versus what we did.
Yep. I think that's a really good point. I'm open to the, I'm open to the fact that my mind might be changed as we experience more areas, so. But right now, I'm just uncomfortable with the fact that it appears to be an inconsistency with what our text is claiming we're doing. Okay, do we want to move west to the 95 corridor, or was there another specific area one of the commissioners wanted to look at?
I was just asking a question on that, and I thought we were going to let the planners kind of guide us through the map.
You probably should go clockwise or counterclockwise, whichever way you guys prefer.
Well, didn't we only just kind of do Sagel, and we need to move to another area of the map, so what's the next?
I mean, there's a lot in Sagel that we haven't looked closer at, was my point.
So mine was, where does, I didn't want us to shift here.
I thought that's, I'll just let them answer. Did you want to spend more time in Sagel and look closer? That's what I thought you were asking.
I think, I mean, I, I said what I thought I wanted to say about the philosophy behind why we designated areas in Sagel the way we did. It's, it's primarily driven by proximity to major transportation corridors, as, as I mentioned. I think it's, to the extent we can determine it's, it's reflective of what the subarea committee wanted to do, although, as I, I pointed out, there's a bit of inconsistency between their language and their map. I think we're faithful to the language, more faithful to the language maybe than necessarily to the map, but, because I don't think they drew the map the way they wrote the text. And if you go to the, we haven't spent any time looking at the west side of Sagel, it's pretty much the same sort of idea. The further you get away from 95, the lower the density, and then, of course, we recognize those areas as remote ag forest if they're government land, the dark green. We've talked a lot about the waterfront properties, there was a time when we designated much of the smaller parcels along the Pandray River as recreational. We heard, heard from the community that wasn't what they wanted, so we've kind of left that back to rural 5, even though there's a lot of already small lots along the river there.
So then that would go back to, the proposal is, there's a lot of legal non-conforming lots within the context of, of the land use designation as proposed.
So I don't know if you want to address, you know, the mixed use area, I know that's an area, that's, that's a, that's been, there's been a lot of conversation about that, and whether you want to hear from us as to why we designated certain areas as mixed use, while we're, while we're still the Planning Commission, we'd be happy to do that.
I'd like to hear that.
Okay. So, you know, one of the parcels that has been a lot of controversy about is the designation that we put on the, the gravel pit, and if you kind of zero in on that, since that parcel starts right next to 95, and it is right now what I would consider, you know, at least a commercial use, we designated that as mixed use. The parcel is actually split zoned right now between rural residential and, and commercial. The portion right next to 95 is, is commercial. Our thought was that that entire parcel should be designated mixed use, but that the zone should be commercial, not industrial. So, and that would be consistent with how a portion of that property is already zoned. There's been a lot of discussion about, well, it's going to be industrial, and then there's going to be a, you know, there's going to be a, a use there that's going to be harmful to the neighbors. That's not what we, that's not how we envisioned it. We envisioned it as being a commercial property, once the gravel pit is, is, is finished, which probably is not going to happen for 30 years, it's, it's definitely going to be commercial. I mean, if you look at that area, that whole area is commercial right now. So that, that was our theory, and it wasn't any particular commissioner that, that suggested that. It was a, it was just a, an application of the logic we used on the 95 corridor, and, you know, the, the fact that a portion of that property is along 95 and is currently designated commercial. Commercial designation, from a zoning standpoint, would not allow a batch plant, for instance, it just wouldn't allow it, period.
I guess I'm going to ask the same question as I did earlier. If you're looking on the right side of that on 95, why did the commission do a little bit more of that zone than leaving it rural 5 or making it rural 5?
Because all those parcels along highway front, only, we only chose the parcels right through there that had direct access on the highway 95. On, on that stretch right there, there's actually, I'm quite aware of that parcel, there's actually five deeded approaches with ITD across the stretch of that. And I don't know if you're familiar with the term deeded approaches, Don could probably fill us all in, but basically what that is, is when the highway comes through and they go ahead and they take some property, widen highway, so to speak, as part of the consideration, they go ahead and grant a, a deeded approach to those parcels. It's not just to permit, those are actually deeded approaches on all, most all those areas, not just that piece, but north and south, those are all deeded approaches.
I, I should say that one of the other criteria that the Sagel Subarea Committee had established for those two land use designations, light industrial and Sagel mixed use, well, I'm sorry, it was only for light industrial, was that they had to have direct access on 95 or in the future, potentially a frontage road. So that's why some of these parcels that are very close but don't have direct access to 95 didn't get the mixed use designation.
Even though there's a deeded access there, that doesn't come into play?
Yes, Don, I, I don't think there are, the ones that are still in the dark blue don't have a deeded access.
Okay.
So, and the other thing about a deeded access, when they went through with the highway project, they chose the best area, different types of deeded access, some of them are for, for field approaches, not necessarily residential and not commercial. So then in the future, if somebody proposes a commercial use on there, they have to go back to ITD and see if that approach that's by mile posting is appropriate safety wise, and if not, they have to modify it. So that, when ITD did the Garwood to Sagel project and looked at the potential for frontage roads in there, that whole discussion of deeded access did not come up. How would it change to those deeded access then, apply to the frontage road or not? That's a chapter for another day. So we use the deeded access regarding what the Sagel Subcommittee said, and that's why the map is drawn the way it is. Some of those, like this larger blue area that comes real close to the highway, there's no access there, so.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So then from that perspective, if we do look at the northernmost parcel of the gravel pit, that does not have direct 95 frontage.
It doesn't just direct access to it, it doesn't, it doesn't touch a county road as direct access to.
In and of itself, the ownership has...
But ownership can change. So I'm just saying, again, I'm trying to use consistent philosophy, consistent approach, and I'm not, so we have some parcels that are very close in proximity to 95 that don't actually have direct frontage, that we're saying should be rural residential, and then we have another one that also doesn't have frontage, direct frontage, and we're applying the logic differently, it appears.
Well, I think, Matt Linscott, I think there, there's a difference, though, between direct frontage and direct access to, and that's what, I think, that's what we were deciding on, it need to have direct access to a highway. See, a lot of those areas up there that, you know, that are chosen there are all private roads, go south of there, just north of Pierce, the Harbison's property in there, yeah, so those are still designated as mixed use, they might not have direct frontage on, but they have direct access to, without going ahead and putting any infrastructure burden onto any of the county roads.
Okay. And then just west of the mixed use designation, we have this outlier suburban area that doesn't...
Yeah, Matt Linscott again. Um, yeah, I'm trying to figure that one out myself. So that parcel in yellow, though, that's all owned by Southside Water and Sewer. So when they got ahead and purchased out there, using that as an application site to the directly east of that part of the mixed use designation there proposed there, that is also owned by Southside Water and Sewer. I don't know why that was left suburban, it used to be zoned suburban, that property was zoned suburban up until 1996. So I do not know why that was, you know, given that designation of suburban.
Yeah, because it's currently zoned, or, sorry, designated rural residential, and that seems more consistent with the context of that area. So it just feels like an outlier without, I don't see what criteria it meets as to why it would be suburban. Okay, if you guys don't have a specific recollection as to why that was, that's definitely one I question that I think should be changed. But with that, I'll stop, I see that we have a hand up from John Applet?
Yes, John Applet. I also wanted to bring up, and Dave Frankenbach mentioned it, that when the subarea committee spoke about this quarter, half mile off 95, it's light industrial, commercial, and rural. Of course, when you put the mixed use, land use designation, heavy industrials on there. And I don't know why we can't remove heavy industrial off that, I think it would relieve a lot of people. Thank you.
So I'll, I'm one of the ones that's been probably the most vocal about wanting to have a heavy industrial or something other than... have a heavy industrial or something other than light industrial added because I think it's important that we differentiate between the two. And we, we have industrial type uses and in my opinion far exceed a light industrial use. And if we don't define it, then I don't know how we're going to address it. And so if, if per the last workshop conversation, we include, whether we call it heavy industrial or we call it just industrial, but we define it as being something that has more significant impacts than light industrial, and we include specific language about having the right types of buffering and setbacks and other mitigation measures, then those types of uses should only ever be allowed when there's enough space to create the necessary mitigation measures. It's, the, the issue that I see is if we don't address it in the language, then it's going to be this undefined issue that somehow is going to get played out in the zoning descriptions in the language and use table somehow, and it's going to be less guided by the comp plan if we haven't addressed it in any way in the comp plan. So that's, that's the reason why I think there's value in including it. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that any and every area of mixed use designation would be appropriate for heavy industrial use if we set those criteria properly. If we don't define it, somebody else will try to do it, and I don't like that idea. I think we should do it clearly now. And I also still think it's important to have the conversation about with some of these, do we take into account the fact that we do have a, an existing non-conforming use? And does that impact our decision making when it comes to the designation? And I know gravel pits around the county, we have a number of, of those that would be impacted by how we apply that logic.
I also think there should be a defining term for the heavy use. And I think, I recall there, there was also discussion about how the use, there's a reason also when it comes to the impact to also county roads, because yes, in that area, there might not be an impact to the roads, but that's one of the things that counties are trying to address is, I'm trying to remember how we were talking about the, we were talking about the logging industry and how it's a logging road and then it comes to the county, but there's nothing that comes that helps address the heavy load on a county road because it, once it gets off of that logging road. And so I think there is a reason to give that designation because of what we're currently trying to address as a state in terms of the impacts to the counties for the roads as well. I, I struggle with having heavy, that heavy designation in that mixed use combination because the residential piece, it feels like it's a, that's a huge difference to me, all in one grouping. So I, I struggle with that, that aspect of it, and I equally agree that that yellow spot seems incorrectly placed, that it shouldn't be that. Because I think that's different than the green spot that we were talking about earlier.
I just want to make a comment that I think we need to be very careful and mindful of our natural resources, making sure that we're not hampering that in any way because they are limited resources. Not like we can find, we can find trees in most places, but we can't find, you know, the gravel in a lot of places. So we have very limited amounts of areas throughout the county that we can get those kinds of natural resources. I want to be careful not to limit those and make sure that we make it harder on those areas and those, those businesses to be able to provide those services. On the commercial area, it's, it sounds like it's been zoned commercial for a long time. I'm not sure how we can go about, I can understand how we can, and I don't know, we're not talking about zoning here, but I understand how we can go to larger size recommendations, but I don't see how we can go to smaller size recommendations when it already existed. If that's already commercial, how could we put them into a larger area that may make them non-conforming then?
Commissioner, could you clarify which, where, what area you're talking about that's already commercial?
That yellow spot that we were talking about earlier. I'm just playing catch up there on your left.
That suburban, that suburban area on the left?
Yes.
So that's, that's currently zoned rural five?
Well, I just, I thought I heard it was zoned commercial since the 90s.
I think they were talking about some of the properties directly contiguous with 95.
Okay.
But that's not, that's not the same as, not all of the areas that are proposed as mixed use are currently zoned commercial. So there's, there's an expansion of that. So we might need to look closer at that if you want to see the difference between what current zoning is showing and what's being proposed with the land use designations.
Matt Linska here. Yeah, when we got ahead and took a look at these maps, if you, instead of going the zoning, if you go ahead and go to the current land use, current land use map, and then you go ahead and compare that, yeah, and then you go ahead and compare that to the proposal that we made, we, we actually, between the south end of Long Bridge to the north end of Coquillol Lake, we actually took that from approximately 1,500 acres down to 1,200 acres. So we're actually gone ahead and, and eliminated approximately 300 acres that's currently designated as transition. And, and we eliminated those, a lot of those areas, yes, some areas grew because of the infrastructure, because of the direct access out to highway 95, because a lot of that area up there in the upper right-hand corner of the northeast, what's currently on the map right now, yeah, that area, thank you Chad, that entire section was, was comp plan currently transition. But if you look at that, very few of those parcels have direct access to highway 95 without having to touch a county road. And so that's why, and it's currently zoned suburban, but like I said, when we're looking at, because we're done with the comprehensive plan, looking at transition to the proposed mixed use, we actually gone ahead and diminished it acreage wise between the Long Bridge and Coquillol Lake.
Some of that though, like that example right there, the majority of that transition designation was, became zoned suburban and is, is a suburban use right now. And then you guys are proposing, which I think makes sense, to make that a suburban designation. So I appreciate what you're saying about acreage reduction, but from a practical perspective, it's, it's already being used suburban and you're just re-designating suburban. So it's, I just want to be clear that we're not, it's not a large area, some of this that was perhaps going to be intended for a different use because it's already being used for what transition allowed for being a suburban zone. So.
And I want to make sure that we're balancing the people in the business because I, I understand the comment made by Commissioner Corn about the natural resources, but we, I, we can't just balance that. We have to also look at what mixed use does to the residential area and that impact because there is a significant change from what it currently is by adding in the heavy aspect of the definition of mixed use. And so when we're talking about we would be re-designating something that actually impacts all of the surrounding and part of the obligation is to balance, you know, and not favor one over another, but what does it look like? So that, that part of, that's what makes the definition that's being given for mixed use difficult because it's including a heavy industrial aspect in the definition, which then has a significant opportunity for changing of that current area because without the change of mixed use for that spot that's currently zoned commercial, the heavy use is not currently permitted. And so that would impact the residential area. And I think that is the argument for why there needs to be its own category because how do you justify heavy industrial? And, and I say that versus anything else because the most extreme of the definition is what I have to compare it to. If I had heavy residential, does that belong, or heavy industrial, does that belong next to residential? That's what I struggle with when I see that designation because that's the maximum use that that property would be able to do, and it doesn't seem compatible next to residential.
Well, I thought we, I thought we dealt with that at the last workshop. We dealt with the definition of mixed use. I mean, mixed use, it doesn't say heavy residential, heavy industrial in the mix. It says industrial, light industrial, commercial. I think it just says industrial. It just says industrial, doesn't say light or heavy. It just says industrial, commercial, you know, multi-residential.
Industrial, the way you guys had written it. So you had actually bifurcated industrial into two different definitions that.
Yeah, if you look, but you look at the zoning, the industrial zone, the current language in industrial zone, I mean, there's a lot of language in there about protecting, you know, the surrounding areas and all that. I mean, there's, there's a lot of language in the industrial zone description that kind of deals with some of the things we're dealing with now. But, you know, you can, you can still, there, there's a number of different zoning categories that, that could be applied to a mixed use.
I think we addressed this. At one of last week's meetings or the week before or something.
Last workshop, yeah, we talked about this.
Yeah, and it's not, we're not necessarily saying that a sawmill is going to go right next to a bunch of condos because that comes into play at the zoning part where we could sit there and say, well, we want the buffer between there, whatever, we want a little bit of commercial between the, the sawmill and, so I, I thought we addressed this already.
We did, and I, I think it's something we just, we need to keep revisiting as we look at areas to say, do we think the language of what we use meets that intent? Because, and we have to go back, I don't, I don't have a copy of the current red marked one that, that we worked on together at the last workshop, but we should pull that up at the next workshop so we can look at the language again as we're looking at the map to make sure that we think those two align and work. Because I recall that we were talking about making sure that the language indicated that, I don't remember the exact words we used, but it was that essentially we would have enough mitigation measures to deal with the adverse impacts depending on the type of use, right, the intensity of that use. And I think in my mind, that's what's critical is that we make sure we have enough buffering, enough capability to create mitigation. And that may mean that some parcels are not large enough for certain types of more heavy impact uses because there's not enough space to create that mitigation. And I agree with your earlier comment, Commissioner, that we have natural resources such as gravel that's critical to the ongoing function of our county. And I do not want to do anything that prevents the ongoing use. I just want to be thoughtful about, we can, we can change a land use designation and still have a, a legal non-conformance where the use can continue as it is today, that we're not preventing that. But what other uses would we be potentially allowing in the future with that designation? And that's just what I want to make sure that our language works with as we were intending at the last workshop.
And I think we spoke earlier about a broad brush stroke, and I think that's what this is. I don't think it's our job to sit here on this map and actually pinpoint one or two parcels that we as a board are going to say, that's what we want heavy industrial to be. That's where we want the sawmill. I don't think we can do that. So we're giving a broad area of this is where it would be allowed. Now if somebody came in and said, I'm going to use parcel X there and I would like to put in the sawmill, well, then they're going to have to go through zoning in order to do that properly. And then we have the authority in the jurisdiction, I think, to make sure there's a buffer between that and whatever is next to it. Maybe what's next to it is not residential, but commercial, and it doesn't require any buffering, but we don't know until the landowner gets to that point. So at this point, I don't think that we're supposed to be picking out a few squares inside that gray area and changing it to some other color and designating that specific spot to be what you're proposing to be the heavy industrial.
Well, I agree. I don't think we're supposed to, we're not, if, if the mixed use designation as it's proposed right now, then we're just trying to say, if you look at anything that could be, you know, within that designation or the appropriate places, not trying to pick what the zoning is going to be for it in the future, but I'm just trying to grapple with, how do we address existing non-conformance? What's the best way to take a parcel that's an existing non-conformance and apply a land use designation to it? What logic do we use? And the other thing I'd like to make sure we consider in this Sagal area, because of the 95 corridor project that was brought up, if we are going to have these frontage roads in the future that, are we going to make decisions based on understanding that we're going to have frontage roads? Or are we going to make a decision based on the current configuration of the highway?
I think if this is a comp plan, we should take in for future references, right? So it's not, I, I keep hearing language going back and forth, the comp plan is for the future, the comp plan is for today. I, I think the comp plan is designed to show us where the county and where the people want the growth to go in the future. And, you know, if there, if we know that there's going to be some frontage roads or if we even think that there's going to be some frontage roads, I think we should be taking into account for that. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's what has to go there next week. But the long-term goal is, yes, there is going to be along all of 95, someday, we may not see it, but someday along all of 95 is going to be strip malls or more encoder buildings or campground or whatever it is, but that's where it's going to go.
And that's part of what, I, I agree with you and with that forward thinking, I want to make sure we think through, if we've got those frontage roads that are paralleling 95 on the east and west sides, when they're done with that project, the state's going to deed those over to the county and now we're going to be responsible to maintain those frontage roads. So everything that we do that's going to spill onto those frontage roads is going to be a direct impact on the county's infrastructure that we're going to have to pay for into the future. So we're going to need to think about that impact with these decisions in this corridor. And that's something I haven't, you know, fully contemplated at this point with the proposed map, but I think we're going to have to consider how that might impact these decisions.
So what are you, I'm not quite sure what you're proposing.
Well, I'm saying the language we have in the comp plan designations, right, talks about highway corridor access or, or transportation system access of our, of our roadways. We need to think about, view the map as if we had siding roads that are county-owned roads because that's what they're going to become, county-owned and maintained. How does that, does that, maybe it doesn't, but how does that impact the decisions that we're making today about these comp plan map designations? Because right now, these, these side roads that are privately owned in the future, based on the current ITD map, is going to, they're going to front onto siding roads that are county-owned and maintained, not onto 95, a lot of them. And we need to think about what that impact's going to be to the county.
What's the negative of leaving it as commercial? To leaving the designation as it is versus making it mixed use?
Well, we, we, we were trying to apply a principle on, on 95. And we weren't, we weren't necessarily looking at individual parcels, we were looking at areas. And actually, you know, we had a lot of input from members of the community that we should, that's exactly what we should be doing. We shouldn't be looking at individual parcels, we should be looking at areas and principles to, you know, to decide how the, how we would apply these designations. That's what we did. So, you know, I, if you want to leave, there's sort of a general principle here. So if you, if you wanted to leave, let's take the parcel we're talking about, currently designated parcel, part of it anyway, is rural residential. It's a gravel pit. It's never going to be a residential there. So, you know, what do you do with that?
So why not make it commercial? Because the other part of it's.
Well, but commercial as a zone.
We don't have, we don't have commercial. We have neighborhood commercial. The only other relevant land use designation we have, and I don't think neighborhood commercial fits there. So the only land use designation which you have a commercial zone besides that is mixed use, that's the way we structure the land use designation.
And that's, you know, unfortunately.
You can change that, but that's what we recommend.
Unfortunately, you know, I, there's been, I think, an equa, an equation of mixed use to industrial or even heavy industrial, that's, that's not, that's not what it's for. I mean, there's, it's commercial, it's, it's going to be residential or multifamily residential because there's a suburban zone that could be there, even recreation. So those are the, those are the zones that are contemplated in mixed use. And to go to the absolute extreme of not only industrial, but heavy industrial is a, is. And to go to the absolute extreme of not only industrial, but heavy industrial is a, is a pretty big leap. So, you know, what we, when we look at these areas along 95, we looked at it and said, look, this, this looks like, as the Segal Subarea Committee said, it looks like it should be the commercial area, one of the commercial areas for the county. You'll see other mixed-use designations along other major highways in other parts of the county. So that was a theory.
And I may disagree with the commercial perspective, it's just, I won't call it a leap, it's bookends. And the way, like I said, even if you take the word heavy out, the way just the language was proposed had industrial and light industrial in mixed-use, which means there were two definitions of industrial uses, the way it was proposed by the planning commission. And so that has to be defined and understood. We have, you know, we just have to be able to comprehend what that means and define it, and figure out what, what that looks like. But I'll, I'll stop with that for now, see if any of the commissioners have anything else they want to say, because we're, we're at the end of the workshop, and then we'll give the public a chance to offer their final comments for today.
On your point, I would, I would contemplate striking the word light industrial out of our wording, and just let it say industrial, comma, commercial, comma, and not defining or industrial and light industrial. Therefore, you don't need that bookend of heavy industrial, it's just industrial. I don't know, I'm not sure why the light industrial got put in there, but, and I don't know, I don't remember if we discussed that at the last workshop or not, but we don't put in there heavy commercial, or light commercial, we just said commercial. So I would contemplate striking that word out of our, our verbiage.
I think that's the problem with the mixed-use is what, how do you define it? And so what can go in there? And so I don't, I think you, you will need to define what is considered industrial, you can't, because then that's more like open-ended. So whatever the words that go into the definition of mixed-use need to give direction as to what can go there. And so if, and I think that's the point of contention for community members who have addressed a concern over the definition of mixed-use, is that it allows, I understand Alan's comment about the big leap, but if the word is there, it allows for that extreme. And so that has to be part of the consideration of, you could go as far as heavy if that's part of the definition of mixed-use. So how does the worst option fit with residential is really what it comes down to. So for me, I, I think whatever you do on the definition of mixed-use, you have to define what is industrial, what is heavy, because in part, the parcel that we're talking, it would shift a lot of what that parcel was allowed to do, which is part of what the community is asking us to pay attention to when we define mixed-use, because mixed-use is changing the impact that, that parcel will have on the surrounding area. So that's, that's my comment on that.
Can I make one final comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, please wait, we're going to, Mr. Bowman, you're going to get the last one.
Oh, I am?
No, no, I'm sorry, I was pointing.
I know who's going to get that one. So, man, you guys have wandered all over the place here, but a couple of things, I missed the last meeting, but I was at the one where the discussion came up, this, where we got into the industrial, heavy industrial. The reality is, if, if you have a light industrial and industrial, well, then anything that isn't light is heavy. And you have to define those, but one, I would just issue a word of caution that if, if it's left to the zoning, so what, so what got happened two meetings ago, sorry, got discussed, was the language for providing buffering between heavy industrial or anything with big impact and residential areas and so on. And if I recall, I think the language that got, ended up with there was fairly good. And if it is, then you're okay, but if you just simply say, well, we're going to address that at zoning, that means that you, we all know how elections matter, and it's not a big deal to change the code as it is to change the comp plan, and it's super important to get the right language in there, so that you don't end up with the wrong stuff in the wrong area next to residential. The other thing I wanted to point out is that with respect to natural resources, nothing that anybody has suggested here, or that's come up in discussion today, would ever threaten a gravel pit. And they could be left non-conforming, and in fact, if I'm not mistaken, and the commissioners could correct me if I'm wrong, we have the two right here that I live in between woods and peaks that are in AF-10 and maybe AF-20, I don't remember, but AF anyway, they're left non-conforming. And that, there's nothing wrong, nothing will ever prevent them from being able to continue as a gravel pit. They have dirt, and they have to follow the non-conforming rules, but those rules are in place for a reason, and they work well, they have worked well. So there's no, that, nothing's going to threaten their right or ability to extract gravel come out this, in the future, that's what non-conforming is all about. Like, you have this use already, you're already doing it, we just don't want more of it in, in the surrounding area. So, guys covered a lot of ground, but I, I think that's all I have, is those two. So, thank you.
Okay, John?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm asking for it to stay non-conforming, and I'm asking please to remove the mixed-use, because the mixed-use for 200 acres to change over to mixed-use is an advantage to one property owner, the Lynn Scotts, and all the community around loses value because of this mixed-use change. It continues to have the rights to non-conforming use for the next 30, I've heard 80 years it will be a gravel pit. There's no reason to add this to non-conforming gravel pit so that it can change to anything else. It's allowed to stay a gravel pit, and that's what we're hoping for it to stay. Thank you.
Can somebody pass a mic to Jake? We don't have one up there.
Just want to hand a couple of things off.
Are you acting in the capacity of a resident, or in the capacity of the City of Priest River?
City of Priest River Planning and Zoning Administrator. So I have a couple of documents just to hand off.
So Jake Gabel's, City of Priest River Planning and Zoning Administrator for the record.
Yes, Jake Gabel, Planning and Zoning Administrator for the City of Priest River.
Did you guys get a copy?
So this was submitted to the Planning Commission, it's dated there February of '25. It was briefly discussed by the Planning Commission earlier this year. They largely disagreed with most of the requests from the city, but I thought I would bring it back up as an additional point of at least discussion. I don't think, well, what was not submitted was the city zoning map, which is what you have there. Additionally, you have in front of you, on the big maps, the city's water and sewer lines, these are a little bit antiquated, they've been extended and up to the city limits on a number of other points past these, but it's been a couple of days, I'm still trying to get the most available data I can. The other things I submitted here is kind of some proof throughout Idaho, you have two other cities' maps, or what looks like, what we're worried about is, is high-density development near the city through unincorporated county territory that would essentially land-lock city annexations moving forward. So you have some data from City of Rigby, where you can see a number of one-acre, they had what's called R1 around the city limits, which is allowed for a lot of small land divisions throughout the area around the City of Rigby. And then the second one isn't labeled as well, the GIS wasn't as good, but that's from City of Idaho Falls, so they're both southern Idaho. So you can see between two cities, just massive land divisions that are inside unincorporated areas. So this is what we'd like to avoid, this is a much grander scale than what, than what we're seeing over in Priest River, but that's what we're worried about. So we would like you to reconsider some of the mixed-use land use designations in the suburban, so mixed-use on the west side and then the suburban on the east side. And the city does have capacity on the west side area where it's zoned light industrial, we actually have a water tower right there, and we have sewer lines in that same area, and new residential development. And I'd be happy to put a more lengthy email together and send it over to the board for you guys' consideration.
Please do. And Alan, I think you were going to make the final comment of this workshop.
I had a couple of comments. The reason the light industrial might be there, because there is no light industrial zone, it's just an industrial zone, is that, that was probably carryover language from the transition category or land use designation, and we didn't change that, you know, it's not a big deal whether it's there or not, because the zones that are identified as mixed-use just say industrial, and there's just an industrial zone, there is not a light industrial. Then some discussion about, we got to define heavy industrial and light industrial and all that kind of stuff. It's really what the, what the use tables are for. I mean, that's, that's how you define what's allowed, either outright being permitted or being, you know, conditionally permitted. And to incorporate all that into the comp plan is, seems to me to be unwise, but, you know, that's, that's my point of view.
Thank you.
Matt Linska, just had one comment. If you guys want to look up 12-326C, it talks about the industrial zone. Currently, right, it's, it's already in, in code, some checks and balances, if you want to take a look at that and read that.
Which one was that?
12-326C, yeah, the industrial.
All right. Lot to discuss at the next workshop. It is 3:12, and this meeting is adjourned. Uh, yeah, we're still on.